Everybody, welcome. I'd like to call the Floyd County Board of Education regular meeting on November 27th at Adams Middle School to order. I'd like to show that all school board members are present. Next, I'd like to take a moment of silence to reflect on why we are here. As a reminder, there's a clipboard on the table in front of us if anybody wishes to address the board. Please feel free to sign it with your address where we can get a copy of you if need to Next is the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Trimble?
No change.
I need a motion to approve the agenda. Dr. Tanner makes a motion, I need a second.
Sure.
Junior, second. Any opposed? Motion passes. Second is spotlight on student staff community achievements. Hang on.
Good evening. Tonight, I really like to not like this because we get to show not only from the wonderful kids we have, but from the wonderful staff we have as well, and the diversity of just how great it is here. And, you know, it's always, you see the Christmas tree and stuff, getting close to the holidays. Now, I get a little sappy, I guess, but I really do appreciate the job that you all do for my kids, much less the other 6,000 that we have. So tonight, first up, this is exciting, first time ever that we've had this recognition. We have the 15th region soccer chance in this county. Never happened before. So tonight, we would like for the Prestonburg High School Lady Black Hat and coaches Paul Virtut and Andy Headley to please come forward and let us celebrate your win. These next two ladies work on scholarships. They help students get opportunities like Rogers Explorers. They counsel kids academically and otherwise. They do things with transcripts, craze, testing. You know, these people have a very long job description. I can't imagine how challenging it can be sometimes. Two of ours were recognized at the state level. So tonight, from Duff Allen Central Elementary, Ms. Casey Tackett was named the 2017 Kentucky Counseling Association's Middle School Counselor of the Year. Would you all just stay there just a second? We also have the High School Counselor of the Year, and she is from the Floyd County Early College Academy, Sandy Mullins. She's a new teacher, and she was selected for an award, and to be eligible, she had to be teaching five years or less and already show that she was making a tremendous impact on students. What got me on this one was one student said about this teacher, "She has taught me more than the Spanish language. She has shown us to not judge a book by its cover," just by teaching the different cultures worldwide. And personally, I think that's one of the most important lessons that our kids can learn today. So tonight, we want to recognize again and congratulate her again. Ms. Michelle Martin Sullivan, Kentucky World Language Association's 2017 Outstanding New Teacher. Ms. Sullivan is from Floyd Central. I don't think I said that. And now, not only do we excel athletically and have amazing team members, but they're even getting those extra things too. And for that, I'm going to ask Mr. Kevin Cheek from Sherman Carter Barnhart to come and explain.
Just give me a moment here to get hooked up. I'm going to share with you all the wonderful work that one of your students has done. Every year, and I want to try to stay away from the microphone so I can get over here, we select a project that we've done in our district, and we like to showcase the students' work in a way that's unique. And what we like to do is, we always go back to a school and we ask the staff, the students, if they want to participate in their art class to have a contest. And we let those students design a Christmas card. And you can see in the image up here, the actual Christmas card that was selected. And we have a little contest. We take all of the cards that were designed, we review those cards, and we take that, we look over it with our partners in our firm, and the partners make a decision on which of those cards that they feel like is the best representation of our firm. And this year, we chose a card from Floyd Central High School that was designed by Brittany Newman, if you want to come forward, and Kevin Sloan with the art department. It's there in the facility. So what we like to do tonight is present, first off, to the school, the art department itself, just a little thank you for the Christmas card designs and the efforts, $250 check that can be used for art supplies. We know how the arts sometimes are pitched and tight, and without art, there would not be any expression, and there would not be any architecture. So we appreciate what you're doing. And then for Brittany, we've got a little something for her, and I'm going to pass this card around so you can actually see the card. It's going to go out from our firm to all of our clients across the state that recognizes Floyd Central High School and their contribution. And then to Brittany, we're going to give her a little spending money for the holidays. Spend it on yourself, okay? This is for you. A little $50 gift card. And for the parents and all the family members who want to see the cards, we've got a stack of cards and envelopes, and it doesn't say anything about showing card or art because it's your design. So that's our way of saying thank you. So we do appreciate it. Wonderful work, wonderful work. She told me this was the first year she's ever had an art teacher. And I think if you look at that design, she not only presented one that was done in freehand, but she also presented a design that was a graphic arts program, actually a, what do you call that file? What kind of file format did you put that in? It was a graphic arts, a digital form, let me put it that way. And it was on her tablet. It was beautiful work, but we chose sort of the freehand style, which really reflects the student's love. So thank you very much, we appreciate it. Thank you.
See, if we can explain the card, why you pick up the card this way.
Excuse me?
Design. Can you explain how, why you pick up this design and what?
She wants to know why.
What gave you your mind, what inspired you?
What inspired you to draw that?
Give them a hug. It's very good.
Any inspiration?
I think maybe she is an artist and not a public speaker. That might be the case there.
This is a beautiful card. Next, the report on student work by Adams Middle School Principal and S.K.D. in Kansas.
Good evening. On behalf of the staff and students at Adams Middle School, welcome. I'd like to say first and foremost, I appreciate several of our faculty members being here tonight for support. Also, in the back of the room is our inaugural fair winners for seventh and eighth grade. They have presentations set up. You're more than welcome to look at those after the board meeting is over. And I also appreciate Mr. Trimble and Dr. Varea participating with our STLB program this afternoon. Just to get started.
All right, Jason, where are you?
You're right behind me. All right, so our basic demographics, our enrollment right now is, and of course, these numbers are relatively approximate based on what the presentation was ago, but we're at 335 students. Our attendance rate is 96.20. Our free and reduced lunch rate is approximately 59 percent, and our students with special needs is at 17 percent. And our overall pay per score is 62.27. So going through each of the area's next generation achievement, we had a score of 7.6, and I have goals listed there for you if you might take a look at those. And again, it's last year, these goals would help us meet our goal of being a distinguished school again, so, for that matter, actually a school distinction again. But next generation achievement, what do we do? We use iXL program here, which is a software program, to accelerate students' learning in math and language mechanics and actually also language arts. We also have really great technology now that we're fully diverse in grades, immersed in this grade six through eight. We've really grasped code and the Google tools that are available to the district now. The students and staff both, I think, are probably really using those. And these, of course, help with several personal lines of learning opportunities. With next generation gap, our score was a 22.4, which was actually quite low, and that's on this slide, and several areas to work on. We've continued to analyze the data to see where we fall. The data shows, of course, that our free and reduced lunch students did perform as well, along with, we do have a hidden gap, I guess you could say, at the time, of males and female learners, of females outperforming the males. So we have response intervention classes, both math and English language arts. We provided ESS services, and last year, we spent all our money and some on ESS. We incorporate an enrichment hour still, where students are assigned to teachers based on their deficiencies. And we've continued to purchase materials to try to improve scores. This one, just for an example, I become a better reader, let's say, actually a book, which we don't talk very much about anymore, for students to use. With next generation growth, our score is 58.6, and we continue to analyze data, we look at our math assessment, see where we are, see where we need to grow for the second assessment in the spring. And with the growth too, we've been having articulation discussions with Prestonburg High School and Prestonburg Elementary, and we're looking to accelerate our groups of students in math and English language arts, to provide the most rigorous, rigorous curriculum possible to teach. Next generation college career readiness, a lot of folks may ask if they don't think of middle school as being a part of that, but we feel like it's part of the whole child. Again, we offer the career course here, which Mr. Markham does a phenomenal job. Part of the presentation in the back, we've always been a very strong IOP school. We have various guest speakers throughout the school year, and then we continue to have a strong operation preparation program. And again, as I've said many times in presentations, a lot of times these slides repeat themselves. I believe that the next generation college readiness, career readiness, having these articulation meetings and discussions with their elementary school and their high school as being in the middle will improve our students' success. The next generation graduation rate, and again, there's a statement that I've just hung on, I guess, as being a principal here for seven years, but we strive to do the best we can for all students, and of course, we're paying them for the next level, which is their transition to Prestonburg High School. You see, pre-bulletis fair, vertical curriculum discussions again, themes are out, career classes again, and we continue to focus on hiring tenants initiatives. We've done decently well for the last two or three years, and I owe a lot of that credit to Miss Sase sitting beside me, as she oversees our tenants on a daily basis. Actually, that's an entire school, entire team effort from everybody, including our district support. And then with the next generation program review, of course, our goal there is always to have 100. We're up in the air of how this is going to be scored and what's going to go on at our state level, but we are continuing to try to integrate program review activities within our classes and document those and pay particular attention. Anytime, as the gentleman said, anytime we can include art, music, or any of the other activities such as that, we definitely try to do so. And program achievements, just a couple of things here we do, and I think we do well as a school. I believe in the whole child here. I believe that if you look at it mathematically, an equation, each part that goes on with your curricula or extracurricular activities must balance to help out and make that whole child what they are. Just this weekend, I found out that we are again the United Club of the Year in Kentucky, so we had a celebration here today, and a couple of noted political members came by and celebrated with our students. Getting ready to go KYA is one of you guys, it's on the agenda. And extracurricular program, I think we brought back to the district, something that I don't think had ever happened, a state championship in basketball last year, and that's something that we've been very proud of and, of course, continue to strive to improve in that area and every area of the school. So, that's pretty much it. Any questions?
I know every year that we have a lot of students from the Prestonburg area that attend the Early College Academy, so I just want to comment, help that you on preparing those students with algebra, pre-algebra classes before they get past that to make sure that they're eligible and ready to go. A lot of schools aren't working or focused on that in the Prestonburg area it is.
I think, too, I appreciate you making that comment, and that's to be in our students and our teachers. As Ms. Britten and our teams work together to articulate and get high level classes, and we're looking at starting those all the way down with Mr. Rose in fifth grade and pushing them all the way through to their freshman year, I think you'll see even greater growth, I really do.
Yeah, that's a pro line that I really want to see, you know, Rob and really, and the city can do the financial work on it, but it's just one pro line, and I hope succeeds. Anyone can get part of causing it to succeed.
Thank you. Every time I see students there that we've had here, it's making me proud.
We usually have more from Prestonburg, is that not right, Sandy? We usually have a majority from Prestonburg?
Yeah, this year, we have 18 from Floyd Central and a big thing from Prestonburg, but we joined South Floyd and Alincard together.
Right. But that's the first year, maybe, that's happening.
It is, it's the first year, yeah.
You have next difference in gap. Your score is 22.4. Your board is very good at 65.
Sure.
Big gap between 62 and 65. How are you going to choose that?
Well, and I was somewhat prepared for that question. If you look at the way the gap's calculated, it's fairly complicated calculation. We had an increase in novice, which we'd never experienced here before until this past year. And just reducing the novice with the tools that we're using, that would fix it in itself. Yeah, I figured out using a lot of tool, and that's just what we do, average, and we weren't novice, but we would have been, and we would still have been a distinguished school this year, based on the old rankings of schools. And if we had maintained this, we always, at least hope to maintain and get better, of course, we always have different students, we would have been a school distinction yet again, at least that high of a level. I really, and I don't want to say this is necessarily a good strategy, but just based on the math itself, it can fix itself, to be honest with you. But that doesn't mean that we're not working hard, teaching hard, identifying students, giving them special attention, those gap students. And when you look at the gap groups for our school, it is free reduced lunch and special needs population. So that's basically the two groups. And real and truly, we don't have an issue with our special needs population, it's primarily our free reduced lunch students. And it's a hard group to reach, but as a community of poverty, it's a group that you really strive to try to help because they need education much more than anybody, a lot of them don't get it from home. So we're just continuing to work hard up there and see it through. We have a plan, we're going to work it.
You mentioned earlier, we have quite a few kids, three and even, but still, it's the lowest number in our county. 57.5. Like somebody went there at 98.5. When you have 57.5, so you have comparatively middle-class kids more than the rest.
Yeah, I got to dig the bottom. It causes its own...
We have only 17 percent now special needs. Last year, you were like 30, 20 percent. It decreased to 17 percent. So county average is more than 30 percent special needs kid. Your school has a lower number in comparison to other schools.
Correct.
You mentioned earlier that the boys and girls gap, and that the boys were performing lower than the girls. So since you identified that, what are you doing to try to progress?
As far as the reading program that we just launched will help some. Some of it's just encouragement, to be honest with you. Getting the boys, the areas of reading and writing, getting in the care. And again, when you look at our state scores on a state level, we performed pretty well. Actually, we did. The district level, we're lower. It's just encouragement. A lot of times, it's literally just a level of encouragement that...
I've always said, the education has always been there for 20, 30 years. It's just a matter of getting the students to be...
There's a lot of kids, and you made a comment, that leave here and succeed at very high levels. So I just, you know, continue to just get all kids to see that it's very important that they do their best all the time, not just on tests, but each and every day. And again, it goes back to my feelings of the whole child, it really does.
Do you have more girls than boys?
If I remember correctly, it's right, it's fairly close, believe it or not, but I guess we had a handful more girls.
What about three and reduce?
There's more, I think, if I recall, there's more boys.
So there is your target.
It's part of it, probably. Yeah. A lot of times, you'll see that with that, and actually special needs sometimes too. It's just, I guess, just the demographics of it all. I don't know any other, because we live in the science world, I don't know. The gentlemen are becoming extinct, maybe.
They lack the factual material.
Yeah. And unfortunately, you know, again, it's back to the encouragement, but some of the pay per person, some of the reading passages aren't very exciting necessarily, so, but that's, I'm not looking for that at any point in time.
You've got about 200 kids there.
Yes, it's a big, when you look per number, it's a big number for any stage, but it's just, you know, smaller percentage.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Trimble.
I'd like to remind you that everybody gets five minutes to speak. If there's anything that we need to require to respond to, it will be done in writing in Chinese, and that's not our policy, it's just our practice. So I'd like to call first is Brent Allen. Getting him this round.
Sherry, how are you?
I'm quite fine. You have a good Thanksgiving?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I remember times that I've come to one of these board meetings, I've come away with a warm, fuzzy feeling, it's kind of like a Joel Osteen revival. You know, this is the last time I'll trouble you all. What kind of power with me? I was talking to Mary back there, and I get calls from parents all the time, and one thing I want to share with you, and the press didn't know anything about it, and no one covered it up, but it's in the carpet. There's a little girl at Betsy Lane High School. And she was out in the parking lot down in the classroom, and there was a boy tried to rape her. And I found that out through a phone call to a friend that knew the parents. So I called the school system, the central office, also called Child Welfare. And I remembered, because I used to be a director of personnel, I told them that if you're going to talk to that child, you need, if the law's going to be there, like state police, you need to have the parents there. Now, that's all I've got to say about that, but the girl was traumatized three days ago. When she came back to Betsy Lane High School, that gentleman, not a gentleman, but that animal that tried to rape her, he's sitting there in the classroom making fun of her. So, and just like Prestonburg High School, the guy, the little boy down there, got almost beat to death, what I heard, I don't know for sure. But anyway, also, he was urinated on, nobody knows anything about it. So having said that, on November the 8th, I submitted a open records request of 21 items to your interim superintendent, Steve Trimble. He responded, and, well, most of the items, some were addressed, some were not. One of the things was a board order that was taking action directing, I wanted to have a copy of the bill or statement that Mr. Shaw gave to the Board of Education for writing me a two-page letter, which I have in my possession. Everything that I'm talking about, the Floyd County Chronicle has. And Steve said that number one, that didn't address it, number two, I asked for the copy of the board action, he states in the letter that the board had asked him to respond to me, this letter that I got. And the board doesn't have any kind of an action or order for him to do that. I asked for number four, a copy of your new superintendent, not Steve Trimble, him, he's nothing either. I wanted a copy of the new contract for 2018 of the guy that you're going to hire in June or July. You know what you sent me, Steve? You sent me yours. Now, you don't insult somebody, I just got an IQ of 14, but don't insult.
I want this copy just for a second. That contract will not be written until we know...
In other words, in other words, it's going to be like Mr. Whip's?
I'm just saying, that contract won't be written until the search process is finished.
Well, thank you. Also, I asked for the W7s. I ended my listers career as the director of personnel in 1996. According to the records retention, you should have a copy of that. You don't, according to Mr. Trimble, but you do have a copy of the W7s, you remember the parent that came through to give? And, you know, I don't know what your attendance percentage is now, but you gave that. Now, when you submit something to the United States Postal Service... Now, when you submit something to the United States Postal Service, that's serious. And by the way, uh, why I'm not gonna be here anymore is, uh, the legislature convenes in January. My uncle used to be the, uh, chair of the Senate Education Committee. I hope to see you all down there, because I will be down there and give them the same information here, so we can all sit down and have a good talk. I asked also for a memorandum agreement for that there was county personnel, county equipment for almost six to eight months on Floyd Central School site. According to Mr. Trimble, you don't have any kind of a memorandum agreement, anything. Also submitted that same thing in an open request to the judge exec that he hasn't responded to me.
For five minutes, it's now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Angela Coman. Good evening, Angela.
Good evening. Hope everyone is good. Thanks, Jim. I'm sorry, I wasn't here at the last meeting. I had a family emergency, it was Nigel Tooten and Patricia Highcourt, represented SCA. I just have two quick things tonight, uh, for nearing our halfway-born school year. And I just wanted to remind everyone, uh, one of our SCA goals is to improve communication from the top to the bottom, from bottom to the top. I hope we can all continue to take steps to improve in this area. And I fully believe that teachers feel their voices are being heard and their opinions valued. It can make a big impact on our school district. And I think we have a key opportunity at this time with the search for new superintendent, um, that process of getting ready to begin, that we have a key opportunity to really improve communication as we continue to strive for excellence for our kids. Uh, and second, I hope everyone in this room, and everyone, not in this room, continues to call, email, and write our governor and our legislators about our pension concerns. Now, this is not the time to come, come complacent about it. They're like, oh, it's dead on arrival, you know, about bills and so forth. Uh, they need and want to hear our personal stories about, excuse me, about, um, pension plans or plans that have been out there to affect us. And it does make a difference. I've been to two town halls, and he didn't even use my name, thank goodness, but Larry Brown remembered that I stopped him in Frankfurt. And mentioned, boy, three teachers stopped me, said blah, blah, blah. Well, it was me, and yeah, I said blah, 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 because I'm gonna stand up for teachers, all of us. And it does make a difference. So, please, I urge everyone to call, to email, to write, to visit over and over and over, and stand up for each other. You know, if you stay in the vod of the fall, let's say. And that's my news for today. Thank you.
All right, next is, are there any students that wish to address the board? Any parents, PTA, PTO? SBDM councils? Classified employees? Certified employees, FCEA? Principals Association? Members of the Board of Education? Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on. Number four, action or special reports, student, all right. Anybody have? Four A is receive attendance, complaints, enrollment, and help aid service report. Anybody have any questions regarding this report? I need a motion to approve. Dr. Chandler makes motion, I need second, junior. Any opposed? Motion passed, four B, receive athletic academic attendance report. Anybody have any questions? I need a motion to approve. Dr. Chandler, I need second. Second, Linda, any opposed? Motion passed. Five is action or special reports for student support. Five A is receive report of superintendent, Mr. Trimble, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add.
I need a motion to approve. Do you have a motion, I need second, Dr. Chandler, any opposed? Motion passed. B is receive utility report for Adams Middle School. And once again, I'd like to thank maintenance and Greg, your staff. Anybody have any questions? I need a motion to approve. Doctor Junior, Dr. Chandler, second, any opposed? Motion passed. Five C, receive FY fiscal year two thousand and seventeen financial audit report, fiscal year two thousand and seventeen annual financial report, and final fiscal year two thousand and seventeen balance sheet. So, welcome.
Hello, my name is Artie White, um, with White and Associates. And you all contracted, I see a couple of new faces, especially that one dead center. But anyway, uh, I, I got the unenviable task of going to lecture down to board meeting right after this. So, I was hoping that speed up a little bit, so we can get through this. But, uh, last time I was in this building, and when I walked in here, I, I thought that if my aunt called here, she, she passed away earlier, but I, I remember she called here in the night. So, that's the last time I was actually in this building. So, uh, that brings back a few memories there, so... But, uh, obviously, I'd like to thank the board for contracting with our firms. Uh, we really appreciate the opportunity to come down here and, uh, and perform the audit. Especially thank Mr. Trimble, a very nice fellow. I know this is under Dr. Webb's watch while he was here, but very kind, uh, man that didn't meet you way to Vin Johnson Town. It's a pleasure, and, uh, I'm sure you're doing a good job, it's internal. I'm gonna, I got two people here, especially, uh, the main man, Matt Wireman. And I'd like to thank him and his staff, they're doing an excellent job. Uh, our expectation is that it would be, uh, very good. One thing that I can do, I can pick and choose the school districts that I do. And I really like doing this one, because, uh, you all do, uh, take care of your finances and, and take it seriously. And, uh, his staff is excellent, and it always has been. So, we really enjoy, uh, coming down. Uh, let me just go through just a couple of things, I'm not gonna belabor them all, because, uh, so you all can move on. Uh, number one, while you have an audit, obviously, you need accountability with taxpayers. And also, uh, compliance with branch contracts and the great federal agency. Uh, the, uh, what is an audit? I know you, uh, I gave Matt some hard copies, I know you all have a good electronic, but, uh, every single thing in this audit report has a purpose. The order, everything in it, just like any profession. Uh, all this information is derived from your staff, uh, and it's culminated in this audit report. So, basically, what we're trying to do, we give you an opinion on those financial statements to make sure that it's not material in this study. So, all those financial information that we get, we, we basically compile that and make a decision based on that. Uh, another reason is compliance with, uh, contracts and agreements. Uh, we make sure that, uh, any third parties you enter into, federal agents and state-owned institutions, and obviously capital projects, and all this has speculation, have that money as a guarantee, make sure that that's compliant. Also, too, we evaluate your own policies and procedures. Uh, the board basically has, uh, powers, hiring superintendent, fiscal responsibility, and policy and procedures, how they operate. Obviously, we evaluate those. Uh, if we do come across a deficiency that's significant enough, we would establish a corrective action plan for the district to follow. Uh, if you all return the, well, you can flip to, if we don't page sixty-eight, there's a summary of the audit report. Uh, and I can just basically, uh, tell you what it says. All the opinions in the financial statements are unmodified, which means it's the highest opinion that you can get. There are no filings at the financial statement level, nor the federal, uh, program level. So, that's an excellent job by the staff in complying with all that stuff that I've just, uh, basically mentioned. One thing that is in the audit, and wasn't in the last two years, and I did, uh, put it in there this year, is a management letter, uh, from the very back. Uh, the management letter is basically things that are not significant enough to actually be in the audit report, but it's in the bound copy, and it's actually to management. So, it is to Mr. Trimble, Mr. Wireman, and, uh, and they relay that on to, uh, the appropriate staff. Uh, those are not in the audit report. We don't think they're significant enough to cause a mistaken statement, and those financial statements. But they are, uh, important enough to mention to management. Uh, our key to it is, is not for them to repeat them. Uh, we wanna see, uh, obviously, those things go away. Uh, we expect that, uh, information not to be perfect. Uh, but, uh, we do like to reiterate that and bring it to their intentions and constantly improve it. And one thing that this district is very good at, uh, they give adequate training to the school staff. The highest risk in a school district audit is activity, just about the formation of it. It's a decentralized system. Uh, it, it depends on two people to begin, uh, every process. It is mandated by the state, it's not a local policy for school users that you follow, where there are state compliance, uh, procedures that they, uh, they must follow. So, uh, those are noted in the management letter. And in closing, uh, I wanna mention two things. And one thing, and the reason is it's financially based, is things for the board to keep in the back of the mind that impact financial, finances. Number one is local revenue, and number two, sending the news on the pension. The reason I like to mention that is, everybody that remembers Carol when it was the Kentucky Education Reform Act back in the early nineties, the reason for the Education Reform Act was because, uh, lower assessment districts couldn't compete with higher assessment districts because they couldn't collect as much local revenue. State revenue was based on the ADA of the school. So, you had unequal, uh, per people expenditure. So, therefore, they adjusted that, uh, and, and basically, the tax, tax base is set up now. Uh, you can, you get a compensating rate, which means you can remain with the same local revenue, and you can extend it up to four percent. Uh, nobody, I'm a taxpayer, everybody here is, is a taxpayer. But one thing that I've noticed, and I'll say, and I've talked in particular, I tell every single school district this, uh, the local revenue and despairing, uh, uh, is starting to gather. Uh, the reason is, is the, uh, it's unpopular to raise taxes. Uh, obviously, uh, the four percent sometimes is out of question. I'm from Madison County, and they went through the same thing. You used to always take four percent, four percent, and then through a struggle with, uh, uh, tax watch groups and things like that. But school districts are part of the community, and, and you all then set the standard on how taxes and how you fund the school district. But that's just what I'm saying. So, I'm starting to see that gapping. And the reason I think that's important is because the tangible assessment that has dropped, and it's part of a lot of these, like, donations that have been made, and, uh, and there's, there's starting to be a gap. Uh, obviously, if you have a drop in ADA, your seat's gonna go up, and then, and also in the assessment, but it's not covering the gap in, in the, uh, in the loss of local revenue. So, I think it's really important from a, uh, from a short and also a long-term thinking, uh, that costs continue to rise, your, your, uh, cost for me are gonna go up. My salaries go up, my cost of operation, uh, and salaries go up, so I have to get more money. That's just part of it. And, uh, so everything will go up in a school district. So, what I'm trying, I'm seeing now, if revenue is not increasing, then if the costs are increasing. So, we're seeing a whole lot of, uh, general fund balances decrease. So, uh, just put that out there. I know, basically, you're concerned about the, uh, the general fund, but, uh, it, it is a trend. And the reason I mentioned the pension, I'm not gonna go into for or against, I can, I can get on either side and pair the other one up, is because that front there is a warning sign saying that your seat is not gonna be as funded. And if you're talking about a forty-five, thirty-five, so you can't rely on them, that, that'll be out. So, local revenue is very, very important, and that's what I'm mentioning. I can go on and on, I'll tell you off the bat, if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, thank you so much. Uh, I love a lot of the old reports. Uh, every year when I read that, I get more information from the old reports than all my reading. But they're wonderful reports. This time, the report is slightly shorter than last year. Uh, this time it's a hundred thirteen pages, last year was like a hundred fifty-six or something. That's okay, that's okay.
Every, everything in there, it, uh, I don't know, Matt, was it, is it, uh...
This is, this is the shorter this time than last year.
She said it was a hundred thirteen, is it longer, uh?
Actually, I thought it was...
Last year was a hundred twenty, fifty-six, this time a hundred thirteen. But that's okay, that's okay, I learned more from this. I still remember, like, fifteen years back, every time you come here, the word is deficits. Long, long, but now we're getting dressed for view, just...
Yeah, and, and, yeah, I, I can't remember exact pages on it, but everything in it...
I'm learning, lots of, usually I try to read every page, and it's a very learning experience.
Yeah, if you read it, you, it's amazing. I know you have to be a trained person to read. Actually, the audit report is not a good management tool for a board. Uh, it's important that you know what's in it, and, and it's not a, if you wanna go to sleep, read it. Uh, but mainly it's for third-party, uh, bonding companies, but how they, they can compare. If you use this document, you can compare any state in the United States, industry-wise, you can compare. So, everything in here is exactly like this in any other state, following the gap. So, everything in here is a, has an order, a reason for the order, uh, and, uh, and pretty much, uh, everything in there is exactly like any other school district that follows, uh, the gap account, and which most states pick them. But, uh, last point, the management letters, that, if you notice, you go through that free list schools and put no conditions under it, and that's intentional. Because one time I had a, uh, a district that didn't have any time, and after the meeting, a board member walked over and said, uh, hey, uh, you left out one of the schools. And actually, I didn't put it in there because they had nothing to mention. But now I list the school and say no conditions. And they all did it, uh, a, a lot better, year after year, they did a lot better, uh, at each school. A lot of times, change over your personnel, uh, it can be, uh, at administrative level, at bookkeeper level, at the staff level, causes that. So, it's not one individual, it's the entirety of the school that makes schools, uh, successful. Any other questions?
So, is that considered management letter?
Yeah, management letter is actually addressed to Mr. Trimble, Mr. Wireman, and it's actually in there. I put it in the bound audit report, because the Board of Education requires it. I used to not put it in there, and I just hand it to you in a loose way. But now, I actually, uh, put it in the bound.
So, if you have bookkeeping, let's say you had four or five bookkeepers within that many years. You said that repeat, uh, that you would be mentioning in that?
Yeah, on the last paragraph, you'll see a few of them that have repeated, in the last paragraph that later. So, we, we just basically wanna see improvement and, uh, and not them repeated, but they're on it. Uh, and, and they check them during the year, so... But it's remarkable, I even mentioned to Matt just a second ago, how much they can improve.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. White. I need a motion to approve the public audit report. Dr. Chandler makes a motion, I need a second. Second, my senior, any opposed? Motion passed. Next is receive construction manager architect progress report.
I'm gonna try again to connect up here, our photos here. And if you don't mind, sir, if you could cut the first two lights off on the left-hand side of that switch, that'd be great. It would help us see a little bit better. Uh, we're pleased to be back again. I wanna be respectful of your all-time, I know it's, sometimes the gym is a little on its own, try to be brief. I did these photos up, though, I think it's important to share with you, um, the various photos that were taken today while on site. Um, there was a progress meeting, we've got Matt with us also, Matt Mills, who's with Code Out Construction, to answer any questions you may have. Beginning of the photos, see if I can get those. Okay, there we go. There we go, okay. Uh, wanna take you through, uh, a look at the progress on Betsy Lane. Uh, the first shot you see here is the... The first shot you see here is the parking, ride, and entrance and so forth at the front of the school. The sidewalks are in. They've got the base material ready to do some asphalt paving here. Hopefully, before the plant shuts down, and you can address some of that scheduling.
Paving starts tomorrow, two days. Usually, we need to have the base down and then complete the paving until the spring. We'll put the top coat of asphalt once the project is nearing completion, so they don't damage the surface coat.
So without the top coat, we are vulnerable?
No, not vulnerable, we're still going to have some heavy equipment, so this is protected where you have a true finished product within the project.
Here's a shot of the administrative wing. You can see the windows in, and spray foam insulation, the high thermal barrier that we've got that also provides an air barrier to the wall system. That is consistent with what you had out of Ford County High School as well. Here's another view. I wanted to point this out, I'm putting my laser pointer, we'll work tonight on this. This is the shot of the front of the gymnasium, and I think what's important here is, is you can see these multiple penetrations up top. That's along the walking track. In a minute, I'll show you another photograph that shows the amount of daylight that's going to be brought into that gymnasium, which I think's really nice. But also be aware that the direction of the court will not pose a problem on the main court for any daylight coming in, because I often get that question. And then this is the actual canopy that actually is underneath this is the track, above the track, and then this is the actual canopy. So you've got a lot of canopy space along the side of the gym. The other thing that's happening, and I think, and we talked about earlier, the Christmas card, the composition of that card being so well, art comes into play with this building, and also with the selection of the colors. You can see the round, the tan, the tote, that is a tie-in to your existing building color, but then we broke the scale of this massive box up, and this will be red brick in here that ties into the other side, so there's some play with the color on this that is also part of art, when you begin to look at that. This is a shot looking again at the admin wing. That'll be the red brick there. You can see this photo at the admin wing. This is a two-story portion that's inside the main lobby that'll connect back to the main corridor access, and there will be windows above that allow daylight into that space as well, so you don't have this dark tunnel effect. It's really important to maintain as much daylight as you can. Brick along the backside of the building going in, this is in the courtyard area outside of the main walkway, and you can see the classrooms back here, and the spray foam is on, and now they're starting to get that brick up and under white. This is the main corridor that'll connect back, this is sort of our grade hall that leads back to the original entrance down the center. We all have a courtyard here, and a courtyard here, access across the center, so this will be a big common thoroughfare for all the students to come in, visitors to come in, to get access to the main building. Plumbing rough end is ongoing. This is in the main restroom bank outside of the gymnasium. You can see here, this is the elevator that is directly outside the toilet room entrance that'll get you up to the second floor, so you've got ADA access to both levels of the gymnasium, which is important in complying with ADA accessibility. Down at the main thoroughfare or the main street corridor that leads back to the main building, we'll have grass all throughout this area again, giving it some transparency and openness. This shot, earlier you heard me talk about the windows above the administrative, this is the administrative wing. Your concession stands here, guidance and so forth, reception's on this side, and then this will be the glass area above that roof, so you can get some daylight coming into that space. This entrance is going back again. This is inside, looking, as you come out the gymnasium, you're going to have an overlook that's over top of you, so you've got this recessed entry into the gymnasium. You'll walk from the main entrance on this side into the building, you come down this corridor into the gymnasium. There'll be a nice logo, the Wildcats in the floor here, and then all this will be an open two-story. There are steps that lead up to the upper level here, and then about the overlook at that common area. More of the toilet room rough ends ongoing. Again, another shot. I think this is important because this is your security vest deal. People can come in this entrance, and the entrance here, and then they're directed immediately into the actual security vest deal, so nobody can get into the building unless they come and pass through that reception area. So you've got the buzzer lockdown and so forth in that as well. Interior of the gymnasium, the amount of daylight, there's no other daylighting or other temporary lighting in its space other than the light that's coming in this window, so you can see the amount. This will have a track that circles the entire area, just like Floyd Central High School has. The upper level seating above here for the bleachers looking down into the court, and then another shot of that daylighting. And anytime, Matt, you want to add something, please go through. Dusk work ongoing within the gym. You can see the decking is in place, the roof is on.
We're on drive. The rooper is completed, the units, rooftop units, we've set those. As you can see, all the dusk work is in place, we're like tying in the dusk to the units that last transition. The sprinkler company is up running all their piping, and the electrician's pulling the water in. So just above the walking track, as you'll see in the back, probably starting Monday, Tuesday, we're going to start with the paint of the base coat, the primer, and the first coat on the walls up to the ceiling area. Then we're going to get a dry fall paint going up there. So that should be dry fall paint in the ceiling area in about two weeks. We're allowing all the contractors to binge that up. Once that's in place, then we'll start setting your bleachers in those areas to get those before we do the wood floors, so we don't damage any wood floors. So sometime in December, your actual bleachers, December seventeenth, they're going to deliver the second floor bleachers, and we'll be installing those in that month of December, so that allows us to start the wood floors. So that's a good shot there, a lot of work that's going on through that gym area.
Again, this is the canopy area here, so the students can walk and stay, stay out of, staying in dry weather here, if it's raining, or wait for parents to pick up, drop off at the front entrance as well. And then this is another shot of that main entrance. There's your red brick, and you see another shot of that. That'll be tan, tan will come across the top. And then right along here is a stone cap and an offset in the building, and then the windows and so forth for the canopy below to give it a break up of that scale. And then here's the red brick along the backside of the building, going side over towards the drive entrance area. You can see that, and a tan brick going around that.
Picture two-way that up. You'll see some investments of that in the brick, but the brick has not been cleaned properly, acid washed, so all that's going to come out, and that's going to be, it's going to brighten up the look of that and be more consistent. So right now, that's not a finished product, it is painted.
You were talking about the second floor bleachers. If the second floor is on like Floyd Central, or would the visibility be better compared to when it was at Floyd Central?
The second level bleachers, because of the scale of the project, it'll be very similar. The first few rows, you'll have to go through that way, and you'll have the court line down below, and you'll have that, so it's.
But the entire court will be visible?
Excuse me?
The entire court will be visible, even though you?
I'll double check, and get back with you, and double check and see. I know on the end of court, you're never going to get visible because you have to push that side so far back, you know, or you have to create a larger space there to get that elevation. It's just the equation of the site distance and the track width coming to rank, so it makes it more difficult to do, but it should be very similar to Floyd, and I'll double check and get back with you, should we mention what is that?
Okay.
I can run some sight lines.
Yeah, because if we can make it a little bit better, that'd be great.
And that's all the photos. Any questions?
Yeah, the completion date was supposed to be in February. Where are we on that now?
Right now, your contractual date was February, feels for substantial five completions March fifth. Backing into the schedule, I would not want to commit to those dates. I truly feel that we will probably miss those dates.
About how long?
We feel first week of May is something we would feel comfortable allowing you to book dates, sit and try to, you know, set any kind of, something at hardcore standards. We need to wait another three, four weeks to make sure something crazy doesn't happen, but we're getting close to getting in the drive with Area B. As you can see, the gym, we're in the drives, we're controller desking there with our roof zone. Area A is, the gym is ahead of, it's okay, it's almost on schedule. It's Area B or Area A, administration area, where we don't have the roof on, where we're trying to play catch-up with contractors to pull it and get it back in line. But, you know, honestly, I do not feel comfortable at all with, you know, say, the March, March date, the final completion date, I think, comfortably, we feel fine with May, with events and stuff like that, and have a certificate.
So what's been the biggest cause of the agreement delay?
Well, I'm coming into this late. Basically, I think they're getting a little bit, getting the footings out.
I know we had.
They get the footings out. We had some issues, you know, it's not a great deal of days, it's like five, ten days with some souls, but, you know, actually by the schedule, the footings were a little bit late, getting the machinery up to a level where we can call it the load bearing laws, get the structural steel guy going. Please in line with about three areas, and it's cost us about eight weeks, one week or week and a half we can justify with souls, but not to eight weeks, I don't, you know, we don't contend that.
Does the contract have no weather delays?
We do have weather delays, but they're not in your contract. Our contract is, what the contractor's has written, there are no adverse weather days. We have a total of twenty-five adverse weather days, or twenty-three right now, twenty-three, twenty-five, which is approximately five weeks, but we'll let the contract as written, you have a diehard date, and we are not entitled to adverse weather dates with the contractors, so we keep up with.
So then what's the point in signing the contract with no weather days if the company is not going to pull to it?
Well, we can, you know, we work for you. It's part of their contract, yes.
Exactly.
So if we, you know, if we miss the date, we have ramifications within the contracts, with your contract, with the contractors, to go after these dates for damages, because they're not entitled to adverse weather days, but we're keeping them to know ourselves where they are, but they're not part of it.
But now that we pretty much have it under roof, the weather delays will be?
Minimal, it's on the gym. The gym is really good. I mean, I can almost fight that battle for the gym, to tell you sometime in March, I just got to get the Area A, the administration area, I got to get it under roof. And that's where we're pushing the contractors to get the steel up and get the roof deck on to where we can get the rooper in there, then we can kind of control our own desking with that area. As small as that area is, the gym is, if you go up there, the gym is looking pretty good. I mean, we're starting painting there next week, so better light at the end of the tunnel there. It's just a small area, it's what, you know, I'm trying to play catch-up on.
And not having all sections at the same time doesn't do it any good.
I agree, and one of the things that's catching us somewhat is, you know, we're having to get the roof on, because that's where our main power distribution is, is in Area A, the administration area, it's kind of in that corner, so we're getting, you know, when that gets the roof completely on, we can power up that panel and, you know, start running some, some of the units and so forth, and get more power distribution. Right now, we're going to start temporary heat this week, help a little finisher enclosure, get some temporary heat going within the gym side, and get that working, but, you know, it's playing catch-up, honestly, on the smaller area. Administration area is my area that I've got to push forward and get it in line, and we'll see where it lands.
Well, we want it to score, but not in short term.
No, we're not saying that. That's what we're saying, we know all the, you know, the steps, and we can only do so much till we get the permanent power in the building. So I have to have that area dry a hundred percent to be able to finally control it for the permanent power to go out throughout all that. So that's my biggest dilemma, is how I get the permanent power within the timeframe I need, and that's what's pushing my date. That's what's making me move.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion to approve the construction manager report. Do you have a motion, I need a second. Dr. Chandler, anybody opposed? Next, action by consent. I mean, we want to look, see if there's anything that you need pulled for discussion from six A through to six O. Anyone have anything for? All right, I need a motion to approve six A through six O. Dr. Chandler makes a motion, I need a second. Second, my junior, any opposed? Motion passes. Jonathan, do we need executive session?
Very quick.
A very quick one, okay.
Potential litigation.
Okay, so what? Potential litigation. I need a motion to go into executive session for potential litigation. When I make a motion, I need a second. Junior, second? No opposed, then let's go. I need a motion for back of executive session. Need a motion for now, executive session. Dr. Chandler makes a motion, I need a second. Second, anybody opposed? There's no action to be taken from the executive session, so now I need a motion for adjourn. Motion to adjourn with Dr. Chandler, I need a second. Junior, anybody opposed? Meeting adjourned.